Okay, good morning, everyone. Happy New Year. Good to see everybody's smiling faces back. Got two agendas to review for Wednesday, January the 8th. Got a county commission meeting and a fire district meeting. Tom Salt, take it away.
It is time to get back to work. New year. Nicole?
Yes, sir.
To start the year.
Good morning, everyone. We will kick off with Julie Simpson from Emergency Management. She's going to do a winter weather safety update. Just some good reminders as we head into an exciting weekend. She will be talking about that as well on Wednesday, but we're talking about cold. We will also cover the Christmas tree recycling program that's going on. There are 22 locations throughout Cedric County that you can take your real Christmas tree and recycle it, and they also have free mulch that will end on January 23rd. We'll do a reminder about the I voted sticker contest that's continuing on through February 28th. And then we have a couple of events coming up. We have our outgoing celebration for two of our commissioners, and that is Wednesday approximately at 10:00 a.m. And then we will have our oath of office for our two incoming commissioner elects, and we also have for the treasurer and the clerk, they will be participating in the event, and that is Sunday, January 12th at 1:00 p.m. And then we will have the ever awaited passing of gavel on Wednesday, January 15th, and that'll be around 10:30 a.m. is when we will celebrate that change. And that's all I have.
Okay, on the agenda, there's four sets of minutes to approve, and then we have two sets of appointments. A set of solid waste management committee positions, one District One, one District Four, and a sheriff civil service board appointments, one District One and one District Five. Under new business item I is a resolution regarding proposed special assessments for internal improvement projects. I'll look to Lynn on this if you want to extrapolate just a bit, Lynn.
So this is our standard agenda item when we have special assessment projects that have completed, and we're now ready to bond and send out those projects for bonding. So we actually have four of these wrapped up into one. They are special assessment projects that were signed by the developer. So 100% of the benefit district has approved these, and they are moving forward with wishing to go through. The roads are done. They're starting to construct homes and get their building permits approved, and we're ready to go ahead and get these bonded.
So Lynn, these are four wrapped into one, you said?
Yeah, we have four separate ones that all finished up fourth quarter last year.
Okay.
That are, so we just put them on one.
So opening up public comment, we just do it in one in general, Justin, we don't have to, okay.
Okay. Item J is the adoption. Marshall Crisp will be here to talk about the adoption of Fire District One fire codes, and it's on this agenda because it involves the entire county, not just the fire district. So that's why it's on general agenda. Item K is a approval of a benefit district in the Silverleaf Acres area. I think that's 45th and Colwich Road, right, Lynn? And no fiscal note for the county. That's the the property owners or the the home builders there will be paying for that for that benefit district.
Tom, if I may.
Yep.
I just received a text on this one. There is a possibility this agenda item will be pulled. We received notification from the developer's agent indicating they may decide to go ahead with this petition as building it as private, which would negate the need for us to to bond this project and do a special assessment. So that's all good, but they basically crossed lines with city where it's taught requirements and our requirements and just realizing that they may want to change things. So we got contacted just this morning. I'll have it figured out today.
Item L is, and I know Scott has briefed you all on the applicant fee increase for M A P D.
I don't know if we've had a briefing yet. Do we want to?
Okay. Well, you will get briefed, and he will go into detail on Wednesday. I will tell you the upshot of this is, and Scott's here, he can address this too, but the upshot is we're trying to get people who are using the services in the planning department to pay for the services and get and divert that away from general taxpayer. That's the theme of this increase. So we had a lot of discussion back and forth on how much that should be, and I think we settled on 10%, right, Scott? And he will get into detail on that on Wednesday, and you'll you'll get a briefing.
Isn't this a a consequence of years ago, we allowed them to essentially throttle their fees to keep their ending balance in a within a range or something?
That was M A B C D.
Okay.
This is plan.
Well, you ought to maybe consider that idea to this because these fees might need to adjust every so often to keep the balances just right. We want them to be efficient and, you know, efficient as low cost as possible, but the fees might need to throttle, which is another way of handling this.
I agree, and Lindsey's right. It's M A B C D, and we've done it a couple of times in in building and construction.
Right.
And you're right, that is a fluid funding model. So go ahead, Scott.
Sure. And thank you for the questions. Thank you for the discussion. So our model is a little bit different than M A B C D. At the end of the year, any savings that we have go away. They're actually split in half and dispersed to the county and to the city. So that's that's why our financial situation is somewhat precarious in that if we exceed our budget, there's significant ramifications because we have no reserve to go back to. Now, as the manager indicated, really, the theme of this one is who should fund the services that the planning department provides, especially when it comes to processing applications? Should, to what degree should it be subsidized by the taxpayers? And that's the question, and that's what the discussion will largely be about.
So I guess I would rather, let's just talk about the last couple of years and how much money was transferred in the last couple of years. Can we talk about how much was collected? It was a surplus that was transferred to the city of Wichita?
Sure, I can have that information. I don't have it compiled yet, but knowing that you want to have that information is helpful for me because I can get that for you.
Is this one of those things legislatively, we would have to have a fund created to let these funds not be transferred over? I don't want to treat this as revenue fund that essentially funds general government. I would rather have these fees
Yeah, this.
Isolated to those functions.
This one is slightly more complicated because the managing partner is the city. And so because it's a city under state law, they have the ability to create funds, whereas we are bound as a political subdivision of the state, right, by whatever the state authorizes. So if the county wanted to create its own planning fund, we could certainly talk about that, but without having something corresponding on the city side, I'm not sure how meaningful it would be.
In terms of functional consolidation, why don't we propose to them a better way to do this? This is ideas work for M A B C D. Why don't we, rather than over collect fees, you don't know what you're gonna need necessarily. There's a temptation to increase these funds maybe slightly higher than you really need because you don't want to run out of money. Actually, just already stated a minute ago. But that money then ends up being transferred to general fund at city and county. If there's a way to to not have that transfer happen and allow some throttling authority within some range, I would, to me, that just keeps the fees as low as possible.
Sure. Sure. I am, I only mentioned our situation and the difference, just to contrast as with M A B C D. In terms of our surplus, our budget is set so that we we anticipate in the future, and we estimate so that we would have essentially have a zero line budget at the end of the year that we would use our funds and that that would be our balance. The way that it has turned out recently is not so much from the collection of fees that we have returned a surplus, but rather because we've had vacant positions that we have returned a the additional funds. So it's the hiring of professional planners that has been a challenge. We currently have three vacancies in our department of 20 people. We have consistently had vacancies, even though we've been able to staff up. We've also lost people first due to retirement and then second because we've just seen a lot more churn in the employment area. But I can have that information about how much money has gone back, what the financials have looked like for a number of years going backwards.
I would like to have that data and maybe push this back a week or two for us to discuss it a little bit further. I think there's maybe a discussion that should happen before we adopt a fee increase.
And Chairman and Commissioner Howell, I think that's the will of the board certainly. I did want to comment just a little bit with M A B C D and M A P D, and I look a little bit to Lindsey and Tom as well, but there there is a significant difference in that there's a standing special fund that I think the city has with regard to M A B C D that generally has a fair amount of money at any given time. And that was part of the ratcheting down or up of fees discretion that was given to the M A B C D director a number of years ago. And then also M A P D does not have a corresponding fund like that. I think Scott was kind of getting to that. And the scope of money that comes into M A B C D on building permit fees is probably quite a bit higher in some than what it comes into M A P D. Again, not saying that the board can't do that and can't, certainly you can look at this further, but I just wanted to point that out.
And if nothing else, we could also have a retreat discussion too. We know that that's coming up in about a month, and we can talk about the mechanics of the different consolidated departments, how that funding works, recognizing that the commission has some interest in potentially doing more of that going forward. It might be helpful to have that conversation too.
Scott, Lindsey.
First of all, I have no problem with raising the fees and transferring it from the property tax bills over to the people who are actually using the resources. So, but my comments shouldn't be as price because I bring them up every single time during budget review. And that's that I think there's an imbalance of what it costs the county versus what it costs the city to operate your department. Because we give you a building, we give you all of the resources that it takes to operate your facility free of charge. City doesn't contribute a cent to that. In addition, if you look at the workload, and I I take this with a grain of salt because lately I put you to work on a lot of things. But if if you look at at the number of projects that come before you, before the M A P C, there's a total imbalance. The the city probably has two thirds of those and the county maybe one third. So I think there's an imbalance of what it costs this county to operate your department. And I don't think that's fair. I've said that every time that you've come up and briefed us on your budget that you want for operations when we're developing our budget, but at the same time, if we're going to take a look at changing fees, maybe we ought to make sure that we balance what it costs the county and what it costs the city to operate your department. And you guys do a great job. I appreciate everything you do. And you've been great supporters to especially my district. It's huge, and a lot of things are happening out there. And I just want to thank you publicly for what you do, but I still want to be fair to our taxpayers. Our taxpayers are then paying double because a lot of our taxpayers are within the city. So it's not fair to the to the county taxpayers what's happening. Thank you.
Hey, Scott, two questions. One, city of Wichita, they already, are they doing this at the same time or what's going on there?
They are. You, we are bringing it to you first. There's been an ongoing conversation for, I would say, even the entirety of 2024 about increasing the fees. The reason why this is coming to you after 2024 is because it's taken some time to collect some data and analysis that was requested. We've also consulted with some stakeholders in the process. And so, and then there's been dialogue about what is an appropriate percentage to land at. So all of that has been very dynamic. And so now that we have some of that information, we have some of that feedback that we've received, we're bringing it to you for.
How urgent is it for you? Do you perceive a fund deficit or are you on a timing?
No.
This is in lieu of Commissioner Howell's comment of wanting maybe some time to give this some more work.
We do have time, certainly for the discussion. There's no imminent concern at this time. It's just a matter of having the conversation. And now, the longer that we wait, of course, if if the if raising fees is the intent, the longer that the discussion goes on without raising the fees, obviously, that's more subsidy that taxpayers than are providing
Correct.
To the department.
Do you have any heartburn with waiting until the budget retreat, or do you say, should we staff this earlier, or what do you think?
I I was going to ask the same question, Chairman. We had a fork in the road here. We adopt this and then do what Commissioner Howell suggested, and just relook at the model, or we hold it and look at the model. I mean, I looked to Scott to see, are they, is the city next Tuesday then?
No, we had not scheduled them succinctly because wanted to allow for any dialogue or conversation before. Yeah.
I know I can say confidently, after looking at the numbers all year, that we are subsidizing his operation. And even a 10% increase, we will continue to subsidize his operation. So.
It's not revenue.
I think this this cost recovery only brings it to what, 28%?
That is correct.
10%. So I, I mean, from my perspective, I think the model deserves some conversation, but that's a 26 conversation. I think this fee increase should happen regardless, because otherwise, Commissioner Dennis's point, we are subsidizing. So I don't see any reason for the commission not to approve this and then have a deeper dive conversation as a part of the 2026 budget process starting in February.
Okay, and you're briefing Monday?
That's quick.
Okay. Well, why don't we just take the briefing, and then if we need to make a motion to defer, because nobody's comfortable, then we can do that.
I'll leave it for now. We can.
You guys can press on. I don't know that I would vote for it right now. So I would probably rather see a deferral, but we can still discuss it and have that motion to defer up, I suppose.
Okay, yeah, very good. Thanks, Scott.
Okay, item M is Joe Thomas with the bid board, and then we get into consent. Item N is a conditional use in District One for a accessory apartment. There's a homeowner at 143rd, and it's 4601 North 143rd, who's doing some few changes to his property, and one of them is to to put in an accessory apartment. I don't think there's any controversy to this, Scott. Item O is a grant memorandum of understanding between KBI and our DA's office and the U.S. Attorney. Mark, this is something a little bit different. Mark is going to hire two attorneys for his office that are going to be HIDA funded, and they will have a connection to the federal system, but they will work out of Mark's office. This is the funding for these two positions. I mean, the DA is not here today, but we can get you more information on that. There's his questions.
And with the grant, if that grant goes away, then the taxpayers pick up this thing?
I would assume that those positions will go away if the grant goes away.
I just, I hate grants when they then they transfer to the taxpayers.
And Commissioner, my, Commissioner Dennis, my understanding is that these positions are solely tied to the grants and wouldn't be other independent positions in the DA's office.
Tom, could you get clarity from Mark with that? Thanks.
I'll send you all an email on what the DA says. Item P is a renewal grant renewal, three, almost three and a half million from the Kansas Department on Aging and Disability for I D D Services here locally. It is a renewal and provides a critical service for for I D D. Tim can answer questions if there are specific questions about that. Item Q, you have been briefed about this is the resolution authorizing, and finally, after many, many months of discussion, a grant agreement between city Wichita and Bombardier. I think you've all been briefed on that. We have been back and forth. In essence, they have provided enough community asset through capital growth and jobs that a an old forgivable loan from 2011 can now be taken off the books. So that's that's item two. Item R is a personnel policy change, and Sheena is on Zoom. I think her and Tim briefed you. We are amending slightly our policy on paid parental leave. If there's any questions about that, Sheena is available. And then we get into the rest of the the consent agenda, which is year and transfer issues, and I might lean on Lindsey just a bit. Item S is a number. There's 17 items where we're doing inter-fund transfer from general fund to to equipment and technology reserve funds to finish off projects or allocate money for projects that were destined to be done. I think all of these at some time or another, we have talked about with the commissioners through budget. But that is item S, and we'll be glad to answer any questions if you have specific items on there that we would like to discuss.
Well, if you don't mind, Tom, I'd like to jump in. If you don't mind, so commissioners, you received two notes from us in the last week, one that ARPA is done, and another from Lori, and yes, a round of applause. And the other from Lori and talking about these transfers, but I want to call attention on your equipment reserve transfer that there is a request for $9.2 million. And the way it reads as the description is unallocated reserve funding. And that is, if you'll recall, starting back in early February through May, when we were talking about the budget and talking about ARPA and talking about investment income and all of that, we talked about taking kind of a two-pronged approach, and it's finally coming true in these agenda items. So this 9.2 million is available to go to the Technology and Equipment Reserve Fund in some part because of the ARPA revenue replacement, the total cumulative $31 million this last year. You're also going to see another one for C I P for 17 and a half million. And remember, that is because we knew that we were going to have overages on Concare Crisis over and above what we had approved for bond funding back in 2020 before the world went crazy and inflation went up. So we know that we have estimated for that cost is not enough. So the intention would be for the second transfer that we're doing C I P fund to cover a portion of that overage, also on an administration building. We have seen quotes up to $36 million. In no case have we agreed to issue any more bonds than up to 27 million. So depending on the route that this commission chooses to go, obviously, we have half of those bond proceeds in the bank today. We have 36 months to spend down 85% of that. This, the additional money would cover that gap. Anything else that's left over could be used to offset any other cash funded capital projects that we'll see in the next few years. I go back and I think about the very large ask that we heard about doing the, remember the climate control issues that we talked about at the courthouse and the jail. Some of those could be offset by some of this cash as well down the road as we face that approach. For the Equipment Reserve Fund, we also had access investment income, if you recall, this year. Wonderful gift of one-time funding. Some of that has already been used. That was what was used to source the zoo contribution, the two and a half million. But we still have funding left over and above that, and so we want to put that in the Equipment Reserve Fund so that we can start to save up for things like the election equipment fleet replacement that we know is coming in the next few years with the legislative changes that we were able to get a year or so ago. We now have the capacity to save money toward those projects. So that's what this is. We have the budget authority, and we have the cash in the general fund. We want to move that cash to these other funds to accommodate that. So when you see that it's unallocated, we have ideas for it, but we don't know precisely what those are. We cannot spend that without commission action. So when it does come time to access those funds, we will come back to the board and request that approval. But because this is so much money, I wanted to spend just a few minutes talking about it. So thank you for your patience. Thank you, Tom.
I think your explanation is great. I just want to make sure we couch the the term unallocated with what you just said. It needs to be understood that this is not just flush fund money waiting to be spent for pet projects. We have a lot of things need money that are not currently funded. We know we're coming up. That needs to be part of the narrative because I think when you hear the word unallocated, people's minds, people's minds jump to, hey, there's free money available from the county. We don't want that to be the message. But thank you for the explanation.
Question on the election, the equipment that's needed. This has happened previously, and there was a timeframe kind of a buildup to save funds for that. Do we have any idea of what will be needed and the cost that will be needed and when?
So at the time that we lasted this, it was after the 2016 election was completed. So we purchased a lot of equipment in 2017. That was $6 million at the time. But since then, during COVID, if you'll recall, we received some grants, HAVA grants, federal grants, and we purchased a lot of additional equipment at that time. And then since then, additional voting sites have been added. So there have been some additional pieces of equipment that have been added. So just between inflation and additional machines since then, I would expect no less than $10 million total on what we'll need to.
And when is that going to happen?
Well, so at the time, they said that it would be 10 years. So we would expect probably after the 2026 election that we would need to put out an RFP. We will need to decide if we're going to do a joint RFP, just like we did last time, where we were able to actually get discounts as the lead partner because other entities in the state joined on to that. So we were able actually to get some credits back and get other costs. So we'll need to start having that conversation probably this time next year.
Well, if we can have that conversation and make a note that if, let's start setting the piggy bank up so that we can make this.
That's exactly what
Okay, good.
This is intended to to start that process.
Okay, thanks.
Item T, Lindsey mentioned, that's the inter-fund transfer, unexpended 2024 budget authority to the C I P fund, 17.5 million. Item U is a inter-fund transfer of unexpended 2024 budget authority to the Health Department Grant Fund of an amount of 248,860. And then item B is the final transfer that is a transfer of up to 1.2 million in budget authority from contingency fund to budgeted transfer centers. And that was risk management, correct, Lindsey?
The the reason for the budget authority is risk management because budgeted transfers didn't have enough. But I do want to call out that in the financial consideration section of that particular item, we do also reference now that books have mostly closed on 2024, we are anticipating a $663,000 transfer from the general fund to the auto license fund to shore up that deficit. So slightly more than was expected. I know I'm not loving it either, but it is what it is.
W is a request, and the AMS chief is here with his staff, is a request to keep two support vehicles in fleet instead of getting rid of them. And I think the fiscal consideration that was fairly low is a little less than 14,000 for the year for fuel and maintenance. Command vehicles, right, Kevin? Do you want to come talk to that?
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. These are two support vehicles, a 2015 Chevy pickup and a 2014 Tahoe that were to be replaced with the new vehicles that were purchased last year. Two, we did add two additional vehicles to the fleet with those purchases from last year.
How many points do they have on them right now?
Well over 20. I think the system only goes to 15.
Probably is on if we need it.
Yeah, there's Bo on there. Yeah.
I can look that up right now.
Okay. Like I said, one of them is was one of our district chief vehicles that does have 316,000 miles, but did have a new engine placed in it, I believe in 2023. So it's it's old and and used up, but it does have a new engine in it. And the other one is 11 years old. It's a 2014 Tahoe, but it has a little over 100,000 miles on it. So.
Okay, well, we have a replacement program in place so that we don't have a lot of expenses for maintenance in the future. And so I just want to make sure that it wouldn't be cheaper to to go ahead and get you a couple of spares that are new and not have the expense of maintaining a bunch of old vehicles.
And these are being used to free up other vehicles, the newer vehicles to be used for our district chiefs if they have to switch out for maintenance, or if they have things on their vehicles, the new 2500s that that came in will be used for that. The new ones are also being used as our urban response vehicle that goes out and will respond to low acuity calls and free up the transport units from having to respond. And we'd also like to expand and maybe start a mobile integrated health program this year, maybe as at least as a trial basis. So that would help with vehicles with that. These vehicles currently are pretty infrequently used. They're both out at the CRBs. As you recall, we were, because we didn't have very many staff vehicles, we had a, one of the old ambulances that was down in Clearwater as a first response vehicle. We pulled that out because that was not a good, good use of that, and we wanted that ambulance is actually going away. And so the the Tahoe is down in Clearwater, and the pickup is out in Cheney, and they, because they only run about 180 calls a year combined. So they're very low low mileage. They won't get much, much use of them, but they're still have enough use that they can be used as a first response vehicle out there and use quite well for that. So.
I I have those points. The truck has 19.2. I I have those points. The truck has 19.2 and the Tahoe is right at 18.
They got a lot of points on them. They have to use them very later. We're going to have a lot of maintenance on them.
Yeah, and that's the plan. That's why they're out there because they they don't run many calls out there, but they're still providing. I mean, they're still out there.
It's good doing that.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
The rest of the general agenda is routine, certain malt beverage plaits, general bill check registers. There is a fire agenda and it's to cover the parental. Well, we have a resignation from the fire district steering council. That's an appointment item. And then one consent item is the same policy issue on parental leave that we have on general agenda. There was nothing else on that agenda that I'm aware of. And that's it.
Okay, Rusty, you've had two resignations on that steering council. Are we short two now?
I'm not sure. I know that they're in process of filling out. One from Bel Air was replaced.
Okay.
And then yeah, one from Spirit. I don't think they've been replaced yet. At least a couple of vacancies.
Listen, update on that. We'll get to work.
Yeah.
Anything else? Good to go. See you guys Wednesday.